...and we also be a
Things that we get there to help lower the state or Today, there the layers from about 12 to 10.
A business plan and a business The aspects that you may Own it, that loan will be forgiven. So they will not need to repay basically the 10 million dollars that they have received. And let me explain the community enrichment program here. What we are looking at, our example of the restaurant, right? So what we are looking at is them to return a percentage, approximately 10% of the money they receive to the community. And so maybe if it's a restaurant and it has obviously the capacity to serve food, maybe they want to feed the homeless. And so they put on a small program to feed the homeless. Maybe if we fund a retail shop, maybe they want to do backpacks for kids going back to school or something. It's up to the business to choose how they want to repay the community. And so again, a very win-win. We get a strong business within the community and then the community also benefits from the program. Are there any, any questions in regards to that before I have one more topic to talk about with you?
Where is it? Diamond Square? Is there something about Diamond Square? Where is that located?
Yes, so Diamond Square is in District 1 and it is Yeah, Deputy Mayor Goins is here. He represents that district. Um.
So you have, uh, Lowly Joan, Stoll Street, uh, parts of the people's area, um, to find out who may go. A little bit of Virginia Park as well.
Thank you. Perfect. And then I don't necessarily have a slide for the next topic that I'm going to talk to you about. So, um, but we have a very exciting announcement to make, made that your city council has been working very, very hard on and our, our city leadership. So with the new Biden administration, there has been some funding that has been provided to the city or will be provided to the city in the name of the American Rescue Plan. And the city of Cocoa is expecting to receive about $4.4 million in this rescue plan. When this was announced, at about the same time or right before this, both the Harvey's Grocery Store and the Save-A-Lot Grocery Store announced that they were closing. Obviously grocery stores in your community where you shop and the city is, is, is very in tune to this and very aware that with both of these grocery stores closing, we are creating a very large food desert in the area, right? So to no, no really good locations to get your fresh vegetables, your fresh fruits, meat, things like that. Having to go upwards of two miles away versus having something 10 minutes, a 10-minute walk potentially from your house.
Right.
So really everybody sprung into action, looked at forming a program to help these grocery stores reopen, uh, to entice them to reopen. Unfortunately, Harvey said they were too far along, um, and wouldn't be able to reopen. But we right now are actively working with Save-A-Lot and we are definitely hoping that we are going to get them to reopen sometime between April 30th and May 7th. So look for this, right? This is a huge community effort, right? Yes, it is definitely your, your city leadership that you have to thank for this. They, um, they really work quickly on this because we want to reopen Save-A-Lot before you all change your purchasing habits, right? So remember that they're going to open and, and we need you to come back to them because it is going to take the community effort to support them and to keep them open. So we, we challenge you all to help in that in any way you can. And to spread the word that we don't have an exact grand reopening date yet, but it is, it's forthcoming and it could be as close as one week away. So. Questions? Yeah?
So at now, at this day and time, you will not have anything to replace Harvey's?
Not, not that we know of right now.
Okay.
I do know that the landlords who own that center are actively seeking somebody to replace Harvey's. Um, but, but there's, there's nobody on the table right now. Yes.
I heard it was Food Lion coming here.
You heard there is what?
A Food Lion.
A Food Lion?
Yeah, Food Lion, a Food Lion Grocery Store. L-I-O-N.
Oh, I don't know of that. It going in the Harvey's Center?
We'll look into it.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it. I've been in, in contact with that center, but they haven't mentioned that. So. If, if it's accurate, that's good news too. So yes, yeah. Right. Any other questions for me? All right. Thank you all for your time. All right, thank you all for your time.
I'm Mandy Bunn, the Community Services Director. I'm going to talk with you a little bit about RU online permitting. So when the city manager came on board, October 9, and he saw that our system was a bit slow, if you've ever tried to pull a permit, everything is paper, you have to come in, made it a little bit difficult for COVID. So he set the goal of 90 days to go online permitting. And the staff was able to achieve that. We started with the smaller permits, your sheds, fences, windows, doors, things like that. And that occurred on March 1st. And then on April 12th, we went full all permits. So now all you have to do is log in, there's a sheet over here if you all want to pick it up, I can hand it out. It tells you exactly how to log in and it gives you the instructions. The really nice thing about the online permitting now is that you can put all your information in and you don't have to fill it out again, it's already in there. Whereas in the past, when you had a permit, you had to start fresh and put everything in there all over again, your name, your address, all that tax ID and things like that. You can also schedule your permits online, and you can pay for it online, which is really nice because you don't have to come down to City Hall to make a special trip. Also, you don't have to try to call, and if somebody answers the phone, you can just do it online. If you want to see the status of a permit, it tracks the status as it goes through plan review, as it goes through the inspection cycle, and when it's released, it'll send you an email telling you that your permit's ready, and it gives you another email that tells you where to pay for it. And then you can either print out your permit or just keep it on, well, you should print it out just so you can have it posted. So also, if you're wondering if your neighbor got a permit for something they're doing, you can go online, type in the address and check that out, you don't have to. So since March 1st, District Two, we've issued 34 permits, citywide 151. So please, I'll have those available for you. It'll have the citizenserve.com email, I mean the website address. It's also on the city's webpage, you can click on there and just let everybody know we're online permitting, moving along. If you request a virtual, some residents still would prefer it, not having the inspector in. There are certain inspections that he has to go in and look at, so. But he usually tries to work with the homeowner. Most of them now are all where they're going to actually look at them. But there are, if you request a virtual, you know, maybe you have some health conditions, you don't want anybody in the house, then he couldn't accommodate, usually it's like electrical, things like that, that he will have to, but you can kind of stay in another room if need be.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So next up, we're going to talk about the police chief recruitment process that we went through. I'll allow the city manager to stop there, this time on that.
Thank you, sir. We really started back in October, sort of developing the requirements, and then probably started before that, for the new police chief. We wanted that person to have 10 years of experience on the road, five years of leadership experience. We wanted them to go through some specialized command level training. That's the training that teaches you how to run a law enforcement or a police organization. We wanted them to have at least a bachelor's degree, and then we preferred a master's degree for the candidates there. And I think one of the most important criterias was, we wanted them to actually live in the city. So this will be for the first time in a long time, you'll have a police chief that actually ultimately will live in the city. And so we started that recruitment, we put it out there, we sent it out to national sources, we sent it out to any source you could think of. And we got about 80-something applications. So we got about 80-something nationwide applications. What the council did was, the process also included a screening committee of second citizens. And so five of those were appointed by the city council, two were appointed by myself. And so they were responsible for screening the 80 applicants and getting them to a shortlisting, ultimately a shortlisting of five. So they screened the applicants, they looked over their qualifications, they interviewed 10 applicants and ultimately decided on bringing four finalists to me. And so when we got to the five finalists, the process from there was, we had an opening night dinner with the council, and so the council was able to interact with them. They got a tour of the city, we wanted them to know what they were getting themselves into, and so. So they got a tour of the city, lunch with myself and the candidates, and then two community meetings. One was at Jelly Smith, and then the other one was at Eastern Door State College. And so two community meetings where you all were able to ask questions of the applicants. Any questions you wanted to ask, we put before them. And then we finished up with individual two-hour interviews between the candidate and myself. And so ultimately, the candidate that was selected is Evander Carter IV from Jacksonville, Florida. And I don't know how much you guys know about Jacksonville, but Jacksonville is a consolidated city of about 1.5 million people. And so very large city, one of the largest cities in the city. And Evander has an associate's degree from the University of Florida, a bachelor's degree from the University of North Florida, and a master's in public administration from the University of Michigan. And so he met all of those educational requirements. He met the command level requirements in that he went to specialized training to be a command level staff. And on top of that, he has 31 years of law enforcement experience. 10 years as a patrol officer, six years as a police sergeant, 10 years as a police lieutenant, and then five years as an assistant chief of police. He's been in charge of divisions such as homicide, burglary, community-oriented policing and violent crimes. In addition to that, he was the command officer for TIAA Stadium, which is where the Jaguars get beat every Sunday. So the very good news is that he will be here next week and starting on the job next week, so we'll have some transition time with Chief Manions. And so we're looking forward to having him, looking forward to him hitting around running. We're going to try to have an event where we have a public swearing-in of the new chief so that you all can come out and meet the new chief and ask questions of him. Any questions you guys have on me?
Once we select a new chief of Cocoa, we're, like, we're assesses, we're responsible for his housing, his whatever, whatever, to be here in Cocoa wherever we select, wherever.
We're going to pay him a salary and he can go buy his own house.
Find out anywhere in the city where he wants to live.
You know, it's going to take some time to live in the city. And so, you know, because we want to sort of flip the paradigm where the leadership team ultimately lives in the city and lives in the community. And so in my contract, I'm actually, I committed myself to living in the city, and one day that's going to happen. It's getting a little slow in the building there, but again, the police chief Evander has actually committed to living in the city. And hopefully, we're going to get there by contract. I'd like to start doing employment contracts for the leadership team, so I'm going to do that with the chief.
Don't go anywhere, you're next.
So this is, you know, this is, I guess I'll say as important as selecting the new police chief, because this is a redistricting. And so the charter of the city, the charter is something that you all vote on as citizens, the charter is just like the Constitution. It tells you how government is to operate within the city of Cocoa. And so each year after the census is taken, the council must form a committee to, and their charge is to determine what the commission, the city council districts will be. So they will be formed probably later on this year. It'll be five members supporting by the council members. You can see the requirements up there, so no one can be employed by the city or be an elected official. It's designed to be a committee of citizens. And so one year prior to the next general election, I think you'll have two council members running for reelection or for election in 2022. And so one year prior to that, this committee is to hand the city council a report that redraws the city commission districts. And so the districts are supposed to be evenly populated. You know, the city has, what are we, 19,000, and I saw the number somewhere, I thought it was 600 and something folks. And so if you divide 19,000 by five, that's supposed to be the number of each city council district, plus or minus a sort of margin there, and I think that's maybe plus or minus 5%. So very important because this determines ultimately who can represent you by city commission district, and that'll start sometime later this year. So these are the current districts. And you can see the city is not a square box, so it's very difficult to actually say, well, we're going to slice those up evenly. That language is pretty much what I just said, as you can see, District One, Two, Three, and then Four. Obviously, as you know, the mayor represents the entire city, and so he's elected citywide, and that's why you only have the four districts. So I misspoke earlier, it's actually dividing by four, the population, and trying to determine what's the proportional split of those districts. Questions other?
Each thing that you said, if you don't truly understand, like, I'm looking at the verbiage, but is there, like, somewhere I can just sit down and read and somebody can say, instead of this long drawn-out information, they can say, this is ABC, and this is divided, that I can understand, sort of kind of language terms?
Yeah, yeah, so, let me do a better job of that. So if you say you have four council districts and you have 20,000 people, then 5,000 people are supposed to be in each district, plus or minus, you know, 5%, so plus or minus 250 people. So what this committee is going to determine, based on how the population is moved, so supposedly when these districts were previously drawn, it was an even split of the population of the city. Well, the census counts and people move, people come in, and so. So whereas this may have had 5,000 people when the last census occurred, it may now have 8,500 people. So you got to redraw those lines to make sure that the population is evenly distributed based on the new census numbers. Does that help?
Oh, somewhat.
Okay, I'll try, you call me and I'll try to do a better job.
Okay, that's a wonderful plan.
The mayor's going to help me out.
This is city manager and staff. When we have our meeting for the redistricting team, for the zone, for each one, is that open to the public?
That is open to the public.
That is the time, let's meet the man, call. They will advertise it on our city website. If not, you know, right down the street from us, so it's our dead man moments. And we can make sure you get the dates for the meeting, so you can get that sorted. Because we don't know them all, I don't know.
Right, right.
So we all learn together.
Right, okay.
I only know.
And I think the most important thing is, I mean, you can read all of that other stuff, just look at the first bullet point, which says that you'll be equal in population. Any other questions for me? Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip one last presentation regarding speed humps within the city. So we get a lot of requests for speed humps, people's speed or neighborhoods. I just wanted to kind of go over there, there is a policy and a process for that. It does take a little while to get through that process. The first phase of that would be contacting the Public Works Department. Let us know the area and the time of day that you're seeing. If you can narrow it down to the vehicles you're seeing as well, that does help. Because we then go work with PD, try to increase the enforcement in those areas. But we also initiated a speed study. On the right here, you see, this is the policy, it's not meant for you to be able to read it right now. But we'll have that on the website soon. If you'd like it, you can email the Public Works Department, we can provide that to you. But there's specific requirements that a roadway has to meet in order to be qualified for the speed humps. So when you all let us know, we initiate that speed study, and then we go through those requirements. And then when we finally get the results, we actually go through that with you and explain the results as well, and tell you if you need to initiate the survey. So you actually have to go through your neighborhood or the street that those speed humps would be requested, and have a petition by the property owners approving of the locations. A lot of people, when they call, they want a speed hump in front of their house. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. Speed humps, just like stop signs actually, when they're not placed properly, will increase speeding. So if you have a long stretch of road and put one speed hump, what drivers are going to end up doing is speeding to the speed hump faster than they were before. Then they'll slow down at your house, and then they're going to speed.
Speed right there.
You see that with stop signs as well. It's called an unwarranted stop sign. And what drivers end up doing is rolling through the stop sign, or they'll speed up to it and speed up after it. Unwarranted stop signs, I know it's a different subject, but actually lead to more crashes than if they weren't there. And I kind of touched on, as a last resort, speed humps. One is the increase in speeding, which makes the roadway inherently more dangerous. The other issue is with emergency services. So you typically need a speed hump every 300 to 600 feet on a roadway. We have to take into account intersections, the curvature of the roadway, where driveways are. But for emergency services, you know, seconds matter. So if you have a long stretch of roadway, 10 speed humps, and that vehicle has to slow down for half a second or one second for each one, that's one second for each speed hump to get to a location to try and go. So we work with our police and fire department on those approvals as well. With the speeding, obviously that's an issue. And then just the aspect of trying to figure out where to locate those with driveways. Some people don't want them, others do. I noticed maybe some questions, I see one here on there.
Ah, yes, I know you were talking about the speed hump. Well, anyways, I'm there right there on Mitchell Street off of Pine Needle, Pine Needle Junction. And there's a stop sign right there, right at my house, because I have to pull out my driveway. And a lot of time I sit down on my porch and they don't even stop at their stop sign. They never do, they don't stop till they get to my driveway. They go past the stop sign, then they stop in my driveway, but I got to pull out the driveway.
Yeah, that's, we'll try to coordinate with PD on something like that.
Yeah, I tried, but that didn't work. I tried.
I'll try it on my side and see.
Well, I have the same issue as well, so please contact.
If it's a sign location, you can start with us.
Okay.
And, you know, we would try to coordinate with police on enforcement.
Okay.
If the sign had to be moved, that's something that we can do. There are requirements on where a stop sign has to be located.
They don't even stop.
The police don't even stop at my stop sign?
If there's any more questions?
There's one in the back over there.
Okay, what we're going to actually do is state your name and address, that way the clerk can take you down and you guys will follow up with you, we'll have on record, so.
Gentlemen.
Gentlemen.
My name is Bruce Cox. I reside in Seven One One Aurora Street, Cocoa. This is pertaining to the speed bump. I was under impression years ago that the speed bump had to be on a straight through street, from one end of the street to, that's like from my street Aurora all the way down to Dixon. But the speed bumps are only on my street, on my end of the street. When you go around the curve, it goes Rosely Jones. It's no speed bump.
I can take a look at that. Rose Jones is a collector road, so that may be the issue. Speed humps are not supposed to be placed.
I'm sure it's proper and correct, but I'm just saying I'm under impression that they had to be a straight through street, not like a Corissa Exora, because they're not straight through streets.
I'll take a look at it.
And I've got one more question about Carl Henderson. Are there anything in the works about pressure cleaning that sign and reclaiming it in the park?
Not that I know of at the county level. That is something that we're looking at and is part of the discussions that we're having one day with some of our parks maintenance and things of that nature.
Yeah, hi. My name is Justice Smiley. I live right on Level One Park Drive, down on the corner of Park and Carolina. It's a speedway. It's, I mean, we got, if you see that the corner of, right there, the corner I just mentioned, and the other corner of Highland in Carolina, you've got massive doughnut ring. Massive, massive doughnut ring. I mean, they leave, they come from Mitchell, and they go all the way down Carolina and around the curve onto, what is that?
Avevo.
Avevo. They go all the way around to Avevo and all the way out to Dixon. It's crazy. Someone, we, you just talked about the speed bumps. I know November, you know, I constantly burn his ear about constantly. We sit on the porch sometimes. I said, well, November, come sit on the porch with me. He sits on the porch with me, and we would see weekends, late evening, and holidays, which is bad times because that's when the kids are out of school. And that's when it's at its worst. I asked them to, asked the tax agent or whoever to come out. They can come sit on my porch. I have no problem. Matter of fact, the tree that destroys my pool, there's an oak tree, sticks on the outside. It belongs to the city. I asked Arthur to come out because I think it's dead because a lot of the fall. Anyway, hell, a motor can sit right there, a motorcycle can sit right there and kind of stop some of that stuff. And I've noticed at Highland and Dixon, the police sit back, two, three houses back, and then you have people running the stop sign. Why we can't do that there? You know, Carolina is bad. Park in Carolina is really, really bad. Someone's going, and we got a house over here with five little small kids, and they play in the road constantly, back and forth. And this house over here got four or five kids, and they're in the road constantly. We need some children at play signs, some deaf kids signs, some something, speed bumps, anything. You know what I mean? That spot really needs to be looked at. Okay, question number two. Really want to know why I can't get reclaimed water. From Highland back to Dixon, they got, from Highland back to Mitchell and up further, do you guys have reclaimed water? I mean.
Unfortunately.
I got a, I got a, I got two water meters in the yard. I got a purple one, which my friend on Highland has a purple one, and he's got reclaimed water that runs through there. Because I was told that I couldn't get them.
Yeah, and that's part of the utility side of it. I'm just the Public Works side, so I'm not sure what that line is for.
But how long shall it take for Mr. Smiley to get it? Can we find out that shop, please?
For the reclaim.
My yard is nasty. Once you know, they have beautiful grass. I thought it'd hook you water. You know, my side is sweet. It's, my grass is like, hey, it's brown.
If I can get your contact and then I'll.
It's level O one, Park Drive.
Yeah, and we'll get your contact so we can coordinate with you directly. And then he can let you know the master plan.
Okay, I need to talk to that operator too, because there's more.
There's more?
I actually, I actually, yeah, they were loving to tell us. I'm saying, and my kids, they have it on that side. I actually wake up in the middle of the night sometimes because cars are going so fast. It scares me that they're going to run into my kid's room and it's really bad in the middle of the night.
Oh, we got, just replace the stop sign. They've been running over like four times.
I don't know how to get so fast when that stop sign is where I'm living.
I mean, the stop sign ran down to my.
We'll look at doing some of our speed studies on our Public Works side and see where we end up. We did one recently at Park in Carolina, so I'll review the results there. We'll coordinate with PD as well. I know we just finished one on Montclair and Cypress. I know that's a big speeding area too. So that one looked like it actually qualified for the speed humps. And we're just waiting on the petition from the applicants to the council in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just like to say, you know, we talked, it's like my father and I. So I do want to update you that we've been in discussions. We're looking at it. Nothing's solid at the moment, but we're looking for that neighborhood to try to see if we can put sidewalks in. We know the kids play in the road. There's no walkways on the side. So we are looking at solutions and different ways that we can control speeding. We're with PD, so we have solutions in the works.
And we love the rain. We needed the rain, but you know, when it raining, you probably put on some socks to walk down the street. Water is hot. And if it doesn't rain, like, right now, you go down the street right now, it probably still flooding.
And that's, the FEMA project should hopefully address.
Ma'am? Carolina and Park Avenue, right here on the corner. Yeah. It's not good. It's not good at all.
June is coming.
Yeah, we're raining every day, every day, and watering up through the front door. But, okay, I don't need it.
And just feel free to reach out to me directly on some of those issues. That's really the best way that we can coordinate. I'll see the issues and try to work.
Anybody else have anything?
I want to talk about seven one four, John. Oh, we're not, we're not going there.
Yeah, this is, this is. We do have, we do have something we want to look at. We have the cards on the table. We're going to go back and those will be presented to council. If we don't have anything else, that's going to.
It's my area, that's District Two Two, right?
You're in District One.
District One, who do I got to speak to?
That is Mr. Ryan, Councilman Ryan Clark. I'm sorry, that's, that's, sorry. She's not here right now. She's not here right now.
Ms. Green, here's a phone number if you want to call up there. They can give you her. We can give her herself a call.
Nineteen forty-five, enter the zone, off of Perron.
That's District Four. That's on Bayou Island.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
For whomever you like. Yes, ma'am, that's your representative. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ma'am. I thought maybe y'all could help me too.
Well, you can.
So if no other questions, that's going to conclude the meeting. I appreciate you all for showing up. One thing that council has been working on is increasing citizen engagement. So we thank you for coming out. We also ask you that you keep up on the city website and updates. We also send out these app eyes. And it has a lot of information as to what's going on, current events. So just stay engaged, keep attending these meetings, and we appreciate you all. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Hearn, as you know, you're part of the Citizens Academy. When, can I ask a question? How many of y'all retired? Raise your hand. Retired, R-E-T-I-R-E-D. Ms. Sager, as Councilman Hearn has the loiter. We're in the Citizens Academy Board, that you all need to be involved, especially, you can tell, because it gives you the breakdown on what and how the city is operating. As we say, don't talk about it. So, hey, if you got to see that in town, if you have to face into place with a human race, don't complain, because now you can participate directly. All right, yes, ma'am, yes, sir? All right, let's give Councilman Hearn another round of applause. Thank you all.